Alrighty, I know that you had asked for time with council to go over the current projects that you've been doing and all of the current benefits for our community's rehab of, you know, our Blight. So, I wanted to give you the floor, Mr. Crenshaw, so you can walk council through all the great work you've been doing.
Alright, thank you. Well, I'm gonna keep this focused on the one main topic, which is the importance of tonight. There are multiples we can discuss, but I want to share with council. I will be having a conversation next week with PHFA. There's one piece that's left to close on this project. All of the drawings have been drawn for almost a year now. BIU has them. There's a subdivision that'll be consolidated with the new entity. Once that subdivision becomes one lot, we will submit for a building permit, and they've had them for, if not a year, close to a year. We're ready to close on this project. This particular project that I want to present today is Royal Homes. Twenty years ago, twenty-plus, under Mayor Savaccio, this was our first tax credit project that we did. It was for fifteen units, and at the time, we were looking to promote them as homeownership. Rent 'em after fifteen years, convert 'em. But what we found is, after the fifteen years of rental and having rental people in 'em, that the condition to make them homeownership and the affordability, it just wasn't there. So, we went back to PHFA and said, "What do you want to do?" PHFA says, as we always do, Dawn, it's so important to keep affordable housing on the market. We would ask that you do a preservation, which would be to renovate all fifteen of the houses that were part of this project. And then, if you want to add some more new ones, go ahead and do it. So, we submitted an application for the renovation of the fifteen existing units, and we asked to build eleven more new units. So, the new Royal Homes project, we'll call Royal Homes Two, will be to construct twenty-six units of housing. Renovate fifteen, build eleven new. The one thing I want to say in where we're building is, these eleven units that are new construction, council members, I want to thank you. About eight years ago, there was issues that this project had all of my stored equipment there, and they were basically saying it was a nuisance. It was your construction yard. It could not, it wasn't zoned for a construction yard. But council, if you look at the record, went ahead, you were part of the council at that time, the mill, you allowed us to convert the property over to a yard until the time in which I developed it into affordable housing. That time is here now. I thank council from before those I was there, and you guys isn't working with me. We were able to get that extension, and as we promised almost ten years ago, we were gonna build, we haven't stopped. My drive and mission is to build affordable housing. We built about sixty houses in this area. I live in this area, and I called it the forgotten land. It was all vacant lots that, from the time the redevelopment, or correction, the Housing Authority had put their scattered sites. It was just a lot of vacant houses in that area. So, the intent, or the goal today is to get council to either do one of two things or both. There's an existing home funding on this project that expires in 2027. There is a DCED soft loan that was put on the project that actually has matured, and DCED has written off the debt.
Dawn, what are the acronym's?
DCED, Department...
Kenton Memorial.
Let me kill this phone. Department of Community and Economic Development. That's basically the state. They have been very cooperative in us in developing the area. When we did our homeownership project, we built twenty-four homes. DCED said, "We want homes at fifty percent of medium income. We'll give you the money to help make that happen." We built eight homes for a homeownership, and DCED bought those funds together and made that happen, because I think we had showed in this deal with their funding that we had met their requirements there. So, that loan, from their standpoint in the city, has been satisfied. But it's still part of the city document that we have, that the city was granted these funds, and they basically are in the position to whether they want to forgive 'em, or if they want to write 'em off, or if they want to continue to collect on them. The city is really controlling that aspect of it.
They is us.
Yes. So, with that being said, the project is, when I say shovel-ready, next week, everything goes to plan. We'll meet with PHFA, we'll do the approval. PHFA has put eight million dollars of tax credits into the deal. They have also put additional funding, because your tax credit is basically is eighty percent of your development cost. So, without soft money, how do you get to a full, completed project? Usually, a lot of the other projects in town, Richford Arms, some of the deals that Hands and other developers are doing, they go to the city, and the city out of either their home funds, or whatever funding that they see meets the requirements, they bring that to the development. As a developer, I just want council to know, between Parade Street Commons, Parade Street East, which is both sides of Parade Street, between Nineteenth and Twentieth, and now, if this project, we're not able to get these funds reinstated, we have brought together eighty-something units in the last twelve years with no funding coming from the city. I'm one of the few minority developers in the area, but we haven't been able to bring funds in for our affordable housing, as some of the nonprofits, Hands, Richford Arms with Beacon Construction, they were able to receive funds. So, here, we're still building. This will be a total of a hundred and plus units that I will have developed with no assistance of funding from my own city. It is what it is. That being said, I'm asking council to do one of two. Forgive the DCED funds, because they forgave it. Three hundred thousand dollars, two ninety-nine. The City of Erie's home funds is two hundred. The total is roughly four ninety-nine, five hundred thousand dollars. If you look at all the other projects that have happened, and the amount of money that's come in out of recent budgets to fund that, it is what it is. Richford Arms was, again, they did, it's the same type of project, affordable units, that the city knows, and they look at their record, what was contribute to make that happen. We're here to continue to make this happen. When I say we're ready to go, we're ready to go. The units that are there, I'm gonna show you, just a brief outline here of the picture of the area. Just to give you an idea of what this looks like, this is Twenty-Sixth Street. This is Downing Avenue. Three units, one, two, three, are gonna be fully handicap-livered. Per the requirements, we only needed to do two, we're doing three. The other units, which will be eight townhouse-style units, very similar to what's our room there, you'll have a total of eleven units on Twenty-Sixth and Downing. This is the same parcel that is now, which is now part of my yard, that, again, I mentioned earlier, that as part of that yard, you guys were able to allow us to keep that yard. National Fuel has run a gas line completely down Twenty-Sixth Street from Downing Avenue to McCain, because they came to me twenty-something years ago, and they basically said, "Do you have any plans to build anything else in the neighborhood?" We said yes, they ran a gas line through there, so all the utilities are there, everything's there, we're ready to build. It's just a matter of where are we at with the funding that's on the table? There was a project that was done three years ago by Hands, it was the exact image of this project. To the point, when we built Royal Homes, it was fifteen units. We tried to partner with Hands to say, "Let us be your general contractor, developer, we partner." We weren't able to do that from the standpoint on their next deal, which is Midtown. If you look at Midtown, it's fifteen units. You look at it, it's a complete duplicate of what we did originally with Royal Homes. The City of Erie did extend their home funds on that project. It went from fifteen units of existing to ten units of new, for a total of twenty-five. We added one extra unit, so it's twenty-six. So, if you look at what's on the books already, there's a mirror. The City of Erie, through a request from HUD, they did extend their home funds. I don't think they put any more money into it, but they extended the debt that there. And that's what we're asking today. Treat us no different. Extend those funds, leave it in the deal, and here's what you're getting. Without reaching into the coffer and putting up more money to create new affordable housing, all we're asking to do is renew the debt that's there, put it on the new development, which will be Royal Homes Two, which will be a new investor. The investor will be Creo, which is Citizens Bank, they've invested in other deals, they invested in Parade Street Commons East, which is the net-zero passive house, the only passive net-zero in the Erie area. It's working. That particular project costs us about nine dollars a month for utilities and operations, the only kind. But I also say, there was no city dollars put in that project. We did everything that we did, it's working. I'm here today to ask council to please step up and say, "Look, we're gonna help you with the project by renewing..."
I guess the concern is that you're comparing yourself to a lot of nonprofits, and you're a for-profit, private company, so it's like we cannot sit there and hold you to the same standard on, I'm not sure why Hands' loan was forgiven and yours is being questioned. I just know that we cannot compare nonprofits to profit companies.
Good point, you cannot, because what's the difference? The nonprofits get administrative costs to do the exact same thing. I get no money. I get not one dollar. You look at the history of a for-profit developer, my cost per unit's the same, my property management is the same, but what's the difference between a for-profit that we are and the nonprofits? The nonprofits can come in and ask for CDVD, CDBG, homes, whatever, and if you look over the years, there's been major hundreds of thousands of dollars given to the nonprofit for administrative costs. I can't get that. If you look at the ACT-127 funds, I'm the only developer in this city that ever used that money to build affordable housing. After I used it, they said, "You have to be a nonprofit." When I built my houses, I sold them to the individuals for half of the development costs. Hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar cost, we sold them for seventy. So, you make a good point. The city should be looking at, not the nonprofits, and I'm not here to beat up on nonprofits. I'm here to say, "I think we do as good, if not better." The other thing, there was a pilot program that was done with one of the local nonprofits. All of their property taxes, they don't pay. Look in your books, they pay some on certain units, but there was a pilot program done with the county two years ago, and they said, "Okay, we're gonna forgive all those taxes." So, with the City of Erie being loaded with the nonprofits that it has, it's challenging. So, I'm here as a for-profit, I could start a nonprofit tomorrow, create it, and I'd be no different. I'd be asking for administrative costs, I'd be no different than a nonprofit. But Erie doesn't need that. Erie needs tax-paying businesses, companies, developers, like myself, that says, "One of the challenges is, Dawn, have you paid your taxes?" Well, when I got tenants that are low to mod income, some of the biggest challenges, and we can't go get any administrative costs, we can't go get any money from anywhere. Either you make it work, or you're out of business. That's what we do. And when you look at one of our other projects, there's challenges. When people come in, as I left, they just don't have the money to pay their rent. Well, Dawn, you can't go and just say, "Well, we'll ask somebody else for some money." We have to make it work somehow. And we're taking those same tenants, we're trying to train them, trying to tell them, "Here's how you can help pick yourself up," because I lived in affordable housing in one town, Downing Avenue, the projects. But because we had opportunity, we came out of that to now we're a builder and a developer, and we're a trainer, we're doing the things that we do. So, with you guys comparably, I would hope that when you look at us being a for-profit, that you don't look at it in a negative sense, or something that you shouldn't do or can't do, look at it as in, "This is why we should do it." Because once we get you to a certain point, you're accountable for everything. So...
Walk me through the process, Dawn. You don't, you don't come to us. We're the last bastion. If everything is settled and done, then we vote yes or no on the benefits of the package. Who, have you been turned down? Have you been stonewalled? What's your beef? We're on the fifth floor for an hour and a half with Selena King and those folks.
You and a few other council members saw that. My beef is, I don't understand it. As a for-profit developer, under Savaccio, under Philippi, we were getting hundreds of thousands of dollars of home funds to build our city. We did it. After Philippi, Mayor Sennett became mayor, we said, "We want to buy the railroad, which is Nineteenth and Twentieth, Parade, both sides of the street." We got a million-dollar grant funded out of Jane Earle to build the grocery store. I can show anybody that wants to see the grocery store signature, Greg Baldwin signed it for me, we had an anchor tenant. I was told, "I am not the one to build it." We sued the city, we won, I got the property, but I still couldn't get the grocery store built. No matter what I did, it just didn't happen. After that, we said, "We'll build affordable housing." Parade Street Commons happened first, thirty-six units, couldn't get any support, couldn't get any dollars, had people contribute dollars, and actually, it was given back to us. So, I don't know...
Are we talking Groner and Mangene, and who are we talking? I don't know, who's the person that hands out the dollars, I guess?
Well, at that time, it started with ultimately the mayor, which was still...
But this time, now?
Well, with this time, we've requested that funding be given to us for this project out of the ARP funds. We met with the mayor, we met with the Economic Development Director, we met with everybody to say, "Can we have these funds forgiven?" And we had emails come back and forth that say, "We didn't request it properly is why we didn't get approved, because we asked. We requested it." It came back, the city has made up their mind, and they've chosen not to extend it. And I don't think the request officially went into HUD, because I think HUD would grant it, but we were told that they don't have the desire to fund, correction, to leave the debt on the project. I was told that maybe somebody else could use the money better. But at the end of the day, I've asked the mayor, I've asked Economic Development to leave this money in the deal, and let's create more affordable housing. At the end of the day, if I'm totally shot down, I'll go back to PHFA and said, "Just like you, one-hundred percent, made thirty-six houses available." The only all-four-bedroom tax credit in the state of Pennsylvania is Nineteenth and Parade that I built. PHFA says, "Dawn, you do a good enough job, we'll fund the whole thing, even though we don't normally do that. Whatever you need, we'll give it to you." Then across the street, Parade Street Commons East, passive, same thing. We asked for money, we were turned down. PHFA said, "You know what? You do a good enough job, we're gonna give you every penny we need." That's not the norm, Dawn, but we're gonna give it to you. Right now, PHFA is saying, "Are they gonna work with you? Are they gonna extend this loan? Or do we have to, again, be the only one?" And I told them, "We're here, I'm hoping that the city doesn't strike me out three times and say, 'No, no, no,' that they step up and say, 'Your third project, we are gonna, maybe not give you any additional money, but we will allow the existing debt to roll over to the new developer.'" So that what happens is, we take the position, because for the next thirty years, these units will stay affordable. As a developer, it is our charge from PHFA to make these houses available for low-to-mod income people. There's a sixty percent cap, so we're not even talking eighty percent. Everybody that's sixty percent and lower, they come to us, and every time we build new houses, it's there. There's people that come in at twenty percent, and the rents are adjusted. The people on Parade Street, our last project, pay no gas, no utilities at all. All they do is come in with the rent. So, there's a lot of things that I feel we do as a for-profit, that even the nonprofits aren't doing, not to knock any nonprofits, they have a mission, they have their goal. But the challenge that I have is, why can't I get the support from my city to do the things that we're trying to do, that I'm out here by myself?
So, you never got an answer?
Well, you were at, I think, the last meeting, nothing responded.
I've heard things, you talked about those units, after ten years, you have to rebuild them, because people wrecked them.
I got a unit on, I got a unit nine, or on nine, da-da-da, a unit at Parade Street Commons East, built twenty-eighteen. A tenant did twelve thousand dollars worth of damage last month. Who's gonna pay for that? Do I have access to come to the city to say, "Help me"? Every one of my tenants are below sixty percent of medium income. That's who I am, that's where I'm at. The City of Erie, as the mayor sits here, he knows, we've talked, I've asked, "Mayor, can you help me?" When we put the application in to PHFA, we put in two applications. One for these fifteen units with eleven new for Twenty-Sixth. I also put in an application to the state for forty units down on West Second Street. PHFA called me and said, "Dawn, you have an LOI, okay, letter of intent from your investors, your banks, everybody, but you can't get anything from the City of Erie? You're proposing another sixty units of affordable housing." We spent a lot of money on that development, and I thanked the mayor, there wasn't LOI, letter of intent, no commitment. Don't want to put words in his mouth, he says, "Well, look at it." They looked at it, we talked to PHFA, they said, "Well, can you get anything stronger than that? Because, Dawn, COVID had just hit, you're a minority developer, one of the few, give me some support, maybe we can give you sixty, give you two projects." Couldn't get it. I don't want to go into a lot of other details, but things were asked of us to do, we did, we paid, we took care of, and we said, "Okay, can we work together to make this happen?" And I'm still here trying to figure out, what have I done, or what is somebody, why somebody may be saying, "Stop, Dawn Crenshaw." The next generation is right here. Graduated from prep, lives in the City of Erie, bought a house one block from this development. One block. He can look at it. My daughter, two blocks from this development. I have my family here to grow and support Erie, but I have more challenges than the average person would want to go into. And I don't want to make this about all my challenges, but there is a, there is something that council should probably look into, to the point of the challenges that we're having.
When you talk to your friends that are developers that are nonprofits, that are not nonprofits, do they say, "Hey, the city gave me five hundred thousand, the city gave me a million, they gave..." Like, your friends that are not, they're the...
Let's use the recent, Richford Arms.
No, I mean, ones that are not nonprofits?
Richford Arms, Beacon Construction is not a nonprofit. I did the entire plumbing for that project. The general contractor liked me so much, he says, "Come do some work for us." I think Beacon got two-point-seven million of city funds to make that happen. Don't hold me to that number, but look at it, they're a for-profit. St. Vincent's, they did that project, we worked. I can get people from out of town, they're begging us to go to Pittsburgh, we're in Pittsburgh, we're building. They're asking us to work with them, "Dawn, you do a great work, great job, what's the problem? Pittsburgh's got minority requirements. I got the bid, I gotta leave here, I gotta get back, it's thirty percent. Every job in every federal state, a dollar goes out, they gotta have a minority. We don't have that here." I can't put words into people's mouths why they do things, but I know what it looks I think in the room...
Are you able to put in writing all the issues you've been having with all of the projects you've been trying to get, though we have a paper, like, record started?
Without a doubt.
I'm not quite sure why you're going through so many difficulties, but as Councilmember Brzezinski has mentioned many times in the past, we need to build housing in our city, we don't need to tear it down, we need to invest in first-time homeowner opportunities. And I've been on council going on three years, and I haven't seen as much as I would hope with all the ARP funds that we had received. I'm not quite sure if we need to have a city councilperson act as a liaison, as a buffer, to see if there's some red tape that we need to go through with, you know, the departments that are having pushback for you. But I don't want it to be a hostile environment for for-profit businesses who are trying to develop affordable housing in our city, when we need that. There's a housing crisis, and if we're gonna ever bring ten thousand new residents here, we have to have the housing for them. And right now, with the things that we're doing, I don't see that as a feasible hope and dream in the next few years. But I don't know if any other council members have specific questions or concerns, I just want to make sure that if we're having pushback on development, for whatever reason, we have a record of it.
Gotcha.
I've seen you going to the redevelopment meetings, I've seen you at the Blighted Property meeting, so there is a visual, you know, footprint of you at these places, so that's great. I'm not quite sure what the details of this loan that is coming up on the date were, or what the deadline is, or anything of that nature, just because, as Brzezinski has stated, we only get the agenda when things are being asked to approve or disapprove. We don't know if things are going good or bad until people come to us at Citizens to Be Heard to let us know that, "Hey, this is going on, and we need you as council to shed some light and address things." I don't know if you all have additional suggestions to put forward, but I think maybe a liaison from council might help too alleviate some of the stresses or the unknown, foreseen issues we might have.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think a liaison or someone actually looking at and talking as you're doing here, I really appreciate that. I did note, it was two-point-four-five million that was given to Richford Arms. The general contractor, which was, at that time, the general, they came in and asked us, they strongly asked us to help them with the plumbing on the job. Well, we did it all, no problems, no issues, we did the plumbing. It's the exact same, we think, same thing they do, we do. We're a developer, builder, general contractor. So, with that, I just asked the city to be more cooperative, to work with me. When we did our homeowner project, which was Zoe Meadows and twenty-four units of housing, when you create your capital stack, we put together an outline that the city can use. The one thing I gotta say that, and I'm gonna get a little off the subject just for a minute, which is, the main concern is extending those funds, because we're ready to close next month. But to just share with council as a group would be the fact that when you look at creating a capital stack and abilities, I applaud the Redevelopment Authority that they put out on RFP for development and housing, their capital stack structure, uses and sources, it's very similar to the one that we did when we did Zoe Meadows twenty years ago, and I thought, "Great, let's, we're gonna really be able to make a difference in the community." But I am getting challenged so much, as you've seen, that we've chosen to maybe go another route. Build this project, because the people in Harrisburg has given it to us. But maybe we're not welcome here. Maybe we build this project, and maybe I tell my kids, "Ain't worth it. Ain't worth it." And that will be determined by how we go forward. I can remember my father right here in the Tulio days, fighting for the opportunity to be a disposal contractor, picking up garbage, okay? Lateview landfill, had the landfill, and they picked up the garbage, so they sort of had a monopoly, but I watched them fight. He says, "Son, you may give out in your fight..." you may give out in your fight, but don't ever give up." And I've been there, fighting, but I'm giving it second thought. Is it worth him, my daughter, fighting the fight that we have to fight when maybe we're not welcome, for whatever the reason? But that's up to the city and council. Councils worked with me before. You gave me opportunity, I think we're a success story. I have kids right now, we have a pre-apprenticeship training program. I'm taking my tenants, kids, another low to moderate income family, kids, black, white, brown, blue, indifferent male, female, and we're teaching them how to work with your hands. We've submitted to the state for an approval, hopefully we get it. But at the same time we do this, there's mountains and mountains of obstacles that come about us. And at any time that council can help us, mayor can help us, the city can help us. We're here.
I mean, do you have a doomsday date on the time that you have to give that money back, 500 grand?
Say it one more time for me?
Do you have a...
A deadline date?
A deadline date?
The, the, the contract...
Pay him back?
Uh, comes due 2027. So as of right now, and here, so that everybody understands, when the funds were given to us, it was soft financing, which meant in the application, the funds were supposed to be at the completion, forgiven from the standpoint of to keep affordable housing available. It was never the intent for myself as a developer to pay that money back to anyone. If anybody makes a call to DCED, they'll tell you, "Don, you've met your obligation, it's forgiven. DCED will not collect a dime from the city." They've said it's done, it's not even on our books, I've called. I did not call HUD because the economic development was supposed to reach out to them. And I had reached out, correction, the city had reached out to HUD before on incidents, asking for clarity, and the things that they asked for, it was granted, it was awarded. So there's still, I guess, a part of me that's saying, "Let's not go around the city and go to HUD." Because HUD looks at me and says, "Don, we asked you to fix this project, we asked you to fix this project. Outside of city of Erie, you're doing a great job." I've not brought this myself personally to HUD's attention. I'm hoping it doesn't have to be that it's right here. It closes, we move forward. But I gotta say, I can't give up the fight right now. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars of prints. The prints that you see there is basically for the single unit, which I could show you, but if you've seen one, you've seen them all. This is the other prints. There's hundreds of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars of prints that's been made, spent. I've invested. I'm not a for-profit. It either comes out of my pocket, or I ask somebody to loan it to me. And if they loan it to me, I gotta pay it back. The 400, 299 of DCED and the 200 of home funds was a loan asked for 26 years ago to be forgiven at the end of the housing, uh, project if it's made affordable housing. Ultimate, we wanted it to be homeownership. I went to PHFA and I said, "I'm the first." Just like with the first with the only four bedroom, with the first with this. I said, "I'm gonna be the first to take your tax credit money and make homeownership out of it." There's a lot of complications, it just didn't work. But they said, "Don, you're still creating and you've still made affordable housing." Not everybody should be a homeowner, and I've learned that. But there are a lot of people that need to be homeowners, but everybody needs a home over their head, they need a place to stay. So to, at the same time as I submit and have submitted to the agency for rental houses, I took 20 something of my houses that I was renting, Buffalo Road, go down it. Half the other houses across the city where we returned for registration fees, the reason I wasn't registering them, because I made my mine up to make them homeownership. Some of those channels have been vacant for four or five years. Why? Because PHFA said, "We'll give you money to help with the homeownership." It may not be today, it may not be tomorrow, but, "Don, we have a track record with you that we've given you multimillion dollars to do what you're doing. We're committed." So then if something comes up, as in some of the houses don't get renovated or fixed up in the first year, second year, it may take the third year, we were awarded by PHFA, Fair Funds, December 2nd, funds to keep our housing going forward. I'm not a nonprofit, I'm not a redevelopment authority, but they still have enough confidence. The state and feds and me, they're still giving me money. But it's like going to Cleveland, if it costs you 100 bucks to go there and somebody only gives you 50, you still gotta figure out how to get, finish getting there and back, or you get there and you're stuck there, and somebody says, "Well, why didn't you come right back?" We didn't have the money. We didn't have the money. I commit, I go out, I acquire property, I start fixing it up. Well, why do you stop, Don? You need capital. That's been our biggest challenge. But we're here, we're committed. Homeownership with the right people is more important than just being a renter. As a renter, I tell my tenants this, "You're a renter, I come in at any time you have a problem, you gotta open the door." Why? Because I own the project, I'm the developer, I'm the maintenance man, I can fix it. Some of them, they love to hear, "Come fix this." Other ones, "Why are you at my door? Why do you do income verification, Don, with us every year?" We just had income verification yesterday by the city of Erie. HUD says, "If it's a 100% tax credit project, you don't have to income verify and have people come out." But every six years, I get a knock on my door from the city every year. If it's a 100% tax credit project, you don't have to go out and income verify every year, they can sub. I get an audit from the city, they were there, they didn't make it in December, but they were there last, when's, yesterday? These challenges, and I say to them, "City of Erie, I know you do other projects, but from a cost standpoint, instead of four of you sitting at my desk, double checking everything we do, why do we do that? If, once they move in and they're certified, if they make a million dollars next month, I can't kick them out. They have to be able to stay there." So why are we going through all of this? And I mentioned that yesterday to the group that came out, I said, "We're small, it's just my family and a few others, but I think we do a great job." But the question becomes, are we wasting money? Are we being attacked? Are we being discriminated against? Are we being whatever? I don't know. I know it's not easy, and like I said, I'm not gonna give up. There's days I give out and I just say, "I'm done." But I'm hoping again, and I'll wrap it up with you guys, let's make the recommendation, or whatever it takes for you guys to say, "City of Erie stands beside you, Don, we're gonna leave this money in the deal. You're not asking us to just walk away, you're asking us to reinvest back into what you started with. You're asking for the funding to stay with 26 new units, we can do that. You're not asking us to reduce our budget for next year, you're not asking to take this out of any pool. All you're asking is what you started 26 years ago that we continue for another 30 years with this approval. I'm committed as the developer for the next 30 years that you'll have 26 units of affordable housing for low to moderate income people on the east side of Erie, that's below 60%, 60% and below income. They're gonna get a brand-new unit, all fixed up, new heating, new roofs, new siding, new windows, all efficiency. They'll come out, the state, they approve, they stamp, they watch what we do, they verify. When it's all said and done, you're gonna have 26 units with this assistance. Without this assistance, it's very challenging, I don't know what we'll do. I don't know if I have to go back and get on one knee or both knees to PHFA and say, "The city of Erie let me down again, what can you guys do?" I don't know. But I do know that we need to be treated not necessarily better than anybody, but definitely not worse than anybody that's in the same arena, who is also nonprofits and for-profits. At $2.5 million for 100 units compared to 26 units, and we're asking for no money, just a renewal. Do the math. They're from Beacon Construction, great company, great developer, they're not from here. Every penny I make, I pay taxes here. Everything I do, I'm here, Beacon's not here. So if I was gonna give $2.5 million to somebody, would I give it to somebody that lives in Erie? Or would I give it to somebody that don't live in Erie? I'm just asking, council, work with me. I feel you're the last stop. I think my track record speaks for itself. I've done what I've done, I'm not gonna quit. I don't know if I'm gonna have the kids stay here, but I like Erie, it was a great place to raise them. But right now, in order to go forward, I don't know. So with that, is there any other questions or comments that anybody has for me?
I don't necessarily have any questions, I would just like you to put up the write-up on the issues that you've been having, on the concerns that you have. That way, city council is gonna have a copy of it. And then I think council will discuss who would like to be the liaison as like the buffer. I don't know what council can do right now, but I would like to discuss with the solicitor if we're able to do anything as far as the details, I don't know. I would prefer us invest in developers who are helping our community. I don't want to scare them away. So at next Wednesday's meeting, I don't know if you would like to discuss opportunities? We have to move quickly, and I don't know if you want to talk?
We're 100% consistent with you.
Okay.
And also, I think we could get a little bit of details.
Okay.
But I mean, but also, just because, Mr. Crenshaw, you've been very patient, you presented your case to multiple venues and multiple public forums.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you could present some of the liaisons, like, you just wanna appropriate list of like, hey, these are my main issues, or this is what I'd like concerns are. And then, 'cause I'd like to get this, and I think, in a sense, I mean, you would like it as well as like, one way or another, get it solved, get a final answer kind of thing. Um, and then you could submit that to the council liaison person, and then if they will talk to the people they need to talk to, will figure out this thing with the loan, um, with your proposals, and that sort of stuff. So you know, it needs to be, ultimately.
Well, I appreciate that, though, I really do. And I look forward to, I'll put it in script form, but like I said, my biggest thing, you've seen me, I've come, I've reached out to everybody. All I'm asking for is an opportunity to make our community a proud place for this particular person to live. And when I look at State Street, every light pole, every contract that ever happened out there, we were the developers. Right now, we can't find work from a state or municipality standpoint. We have been given opportunities to do other things in this community, which is great. But from the state and government contract standpoint, I'm still dumbfounded how there's no requirements. Because as you reach into the community of the housing authority, you reach into the low-income, and you have these requirements that say, "You gotta take one of the Section 3s or the minorities and give them a chance." I'm that byproduct that says me to do that. Over 100-plus units of building, affordable housing, give back, it happened. But if I had never had those goals, mayor, if they were never set there, and other mayors had pushed them, I wouldn't be here, okay? But now, that's not happening. All the work that's going on, give me 10% of that, or give any minority 10% of the amount of monies that we spend, he can pick himself up, he can make a difference. But if you don't put it there, and think of it this way, how many here at this building do you go to church or I go to church? None of you. How many of you hang out and we party together? None of you. So it's about relationship. And you don't mandate certain requirements that happen that say that, "Now, I'm gonna bring you to the table, we can talk," which is a minority requirement, participation level, it don't happen. The reason we became a developer, I'll say this, and then I will get out of here. The reason we became a developer, I wanted to be a general contractor. I said I can do anything that anybody else does, but we could not. And Mayor Sabacchio, thank God for her, she says, "Don, as a school teacher, I see where you're at, but you don't have, at that time, capacity, you don't have the experience, but I'm gonna give you a chance, this project right here." She came out, Jeff Spalding and her, they gave us a chance. We built it, we've been growing ever since. But it was about that requirement, goal, getting us to the table so that we can grow. Here's my son, if he never gets an opportunity to eat at the table, why would he stay here? I have a daughter, same thing, I've taught them. But right now, city of Erie, in the last 10 years plus, I think we've gone backwards when it comes to minority opportunities and participation. Because we got a piece of everything. Myself, Mac Bean, Taylor, all those guys, why did we survive? Because it was mandated at a piece of the power, not all of them, get given to a minority. And the most qualified, capable minority would get a piece. Well, we stepped up to the point, not only were we that minority that got a piece, we're doing million-dollar developments now. But that's how we got there. That's how we got there. The baseball field, Mayor, Mayor Sabacchio, she called the general contractor and says, "You gotta work with this guy. You gotta help him to do things." They did, we put in the entire baseball field. I put in all the sands, I excavated, I did that. The Erie Insurance Arena, the entire heating system, mayor, I put that in. EMTA, the entire heating system, I put that in. Bayfront Highway, 1989, I put in every manhole and catch basin down there. The general contractor went belly up, he specked me with a half a million dollars of debt. I owed the IRS, and people will say, "Well, you owed, Don, you're slow paid, you don't do this." That's because, look at the city of Erie, how many Lindenhund students are stepping up to say, "Even with all your work for all, we're gonna put money out there." The one that's done it, and I'm gonna end it on this, Erie Bank, they're making a difference. They've stepped up, and they said, "We're gonna give you an opportunity, you're gonna build the bank over here. We're gonna give you a line of credit that you can do some things." 40 years later, on 40 years of company, we're now at the point where people are giving us some new things and opportunities. But I go back and I say this, I thank council for taking the time and let me come and present the challenges that we're having. And I hope, and I pray, that after today, we can move forward, complete Royal Homes and many other projects. Because there's not another developer for-profit that I think...
Where's that, this is an old real estate guy, where's that West Second Street site?
Where is it? It's sitting there, I've invested...
Now, where is it?
Oh, Second, I'm sorry, Second and Cherry, across from, uh...
The ball field?
Ball field there. I got full plans, I spent a lot of money, it's ready. But we needed ARP or matching dollars to help fill that gap, and it just never happened. When you look at the millions of dollars, I don't want to pick on anybody, even just here, but if you look at the millions of dollars of ARP money, here's what I don't understand, and I could keep going, I'll write that list. But guys, our statistics and the minority challenges that we have brought all those dollars to our community. And then when our minorities can't get a loan through the agency that was, at the end of the day, gonna loan money to them because of legal issues, so the minority's getting nothing. I'm the largest minority here, and I can't get a penny to help my people? To help the people of Erie? The men and women that are low to moderate income, there's something just, just not right. Don't know what it is.
I just wanna read this article before we close, um, from Talk Erie. And I quote, "Congratulations to Beacon Communities on the completion of the renovation of Richford Arms and downtown Erie, said Erie Mayor Joe Simberg on Wednesday. Quality, affordable housing is a critical need in our community and an important part of our vision to ensure that all neighborhoods are vibrant and welcoming. The historical building provides much-needed affordable housing for low and moderate-income residents. I'm happy that the city could provide 2.45 million in low-interest loans for the first transitional project through our Home Investment Partnership Federal Funding Allocation from Department of Housing and Urban Development." End quote.
So, there's what we say...
I think with your list that you're gonna put together, it would be a good idea if you found other develop, private developers.
That receive money?
And so like, hey, these 10 got it, I did, I mean, you know what I mean? Like, if I had 10 kids sitting here and one kid saying, "Hey, they all get candy and I don't." He could say, show that. I mean, you know.
Can't deny the proof.
I mean, if you are able to show, there's 10 people, and they all getting this, and I'm not, then that's, you know.
2012, from there to now, we haven't gotten it done. But I'll give you that documentation. And then at the end of the day, as I stated, and I don't wanna get sidetracked, the crucial thing is, if somehow we can get a positive answer.
When is the selling date?
We're closing on the project. This is February. PHFA's having a meeting next week. They'll probably by March be able to close. March, realistically, no later than April. So I would hope to be able to tell them, because the next thing that I'll be asked is, you know, where are you at with everything as far as being able to close your deal? What loose ends do you got? Let's close it. And I'm hoping that this is one that, when it's all said and done, doesn't surface to the point of it being a cost, an additional cost that, as it stands now, I'd have to bear to be able to say we're gonna close.
And that's a question, Dawn. How much are you asking for?
I'm asking for the forgiveness.
Of the 500 grand?
Of the 300 grand, which was DCED. And the only reason I'm asking for the forgiveness is 299. But the only reason I'm asking for that to be forgiven is because they forgave it. It's not an obligation in any way to the City of Erie. It was free money given to them. I'm asking for the 200,000 of home funds to be rolled over, that the new developer would assume a note or a debt that would have a 30-year outline, and I believe that for council, they've done it, they're familiar with it, that it would stay on the project. Right now, that is on five units, which is the five-plex, which I didn't go into all of the existing. But to leave it right on the existing buildings that it's on, and just renew it as a new investor, and a new limited partnership is created, it'll absorb the old debt from the original project. And that's what we'd be asking.
So you don't ask for any more money?
No, no. The agency has stepped up and said, Dawn, we have confidence in you. We giving you the millions of dollars of tax credits to build. We're just ready to go forward. Where are you at?
I have a pre-planned meeting with the solicitor's office. Well, the solicitor's and the clerks for next Wednesday, so I will send out an email to council members and find out who would like to be the liaison. And please get that document to us so we can, you know, reference what's going on and maybe see what we can do, because I don't wanna make the environment hostile for development. Developers who've been doing the work, and you have 40 years of history here, and your son is going to be taking over one day. So for us to make it a hostile environment for you is just gonna show the youth that we're not welcoming to new development. And that's not what we want, especially when we need new opportunities to come into our city. We need new housing. It's a desperate need. And we wanna bring new residents here, but the housing is just not where it needs to be. So we shouldn't be trying to make things unfair for the few that are actually able to have success stories in our community. I don't know if any other one else on council has anything to add.
I'd just also like to share yesterday, Tuesday, PHFA, 125 million of additional funding for Green is now available. We have the only net zero passive house in the City of Erie. We could duplicate that. But I gotta say, if I'm gonna fight, it's not worth it. We did it. It worked. But there's millions of dollars that's out there available for low-to-moderate income people and homeownership, as well as new rental housing. We know how to do it. We've been doing it. All I ask is an invite to the table to make it happen. And we'll get you that.
Thank you.
I thank you. I wanna thank everybody again that does make me feel good to know that I can come to council, and you'll listen. We'll see what we're able to do, but I appreciate it.
Yep, we're gonna discuss it. Thank you.